Karl, if you're ready to start the broadcast, that would be great on YouTube. Thank you. I'm going to start recording it as well. And we're good to go?
Good to go. Thank you very much indeed, Helen. Well, good morning, everybody, and welcome to regulatory today. This is a virtual regulatory meeting, and as are a number of us here today, including some guests. I'd just like to run through a few housekeeping rules. Can I ask members, please, to put your microphone on to mute? When you're not speaking to avoid distracting noises, et cetera. And then obviously remember to unmute yourself when you do wish to speak. Right, I'm Mark Cargill. I am chairing the meeting today. Helen Parnsley is assisting from Democratic Services. And Ian Marriott will be supporting myself by legal point of view. Case officers Sally and Matthew will be presenting the applications. And further support from Democratic Services available. Right, I would ask members not to use the chat function to ask questions. We do have a hands raise function available. I can see that. So as soon as anyone at the appropriate time wants to ask a question, please use the raised hand, and then I will bring you in at the appropriate time. If the raised hand's not working, then please do use the chat function to say, I would like to speak or speak, as the case may be. Right, and then Helen will advise me on that particular point. Now, one of the other things which we're going to implement this time is that if we decide to amend a condition during the process of the meeting, we will ask officers to draft that up and then read it out. So that the members of the public can hear it because they can't always see the chat function or won't be able to see the chat function. So we'd just like to do that. Okay, and I'd just like, hope you have a nice, smooth meeting today. Now, before we start the meeting proper, I'd just like to have a minute's silence for loss of our colleague, Richard Chatterway. A great loss to us all. I'd like members, please, if they wouldn't mind, to turn their video off for one minute. I'll bring you back on again in a moment. So one minute's silence, please. Thank you. Thank you, members. I'd just like to start off a little, if I may, by saying that I didn't know Richard well, but I did know him, and we got on well. And I found Richard to be a robust character in his views, very good debates, committed to his beliefs. But he worked well with others, and I think that was a nice thing about it. We actually got on because we could have a discussion about it. I think we didn't always agree, but that's normal in our line of business. I remember specifically one time when Richard, there had been a debate in the chamber. And Richard, I think we'd all agreed on a particular course of action, which was pragmatic, and it was the right decision. And Richard stood up and said, that's what makes this council what it is. And I agree with that because I think we have got a very good council. People are collaborative working, and we come up generally with the right solution, shall we say. I also know that Richard was on this committee and chaired it, I believe. I think I can be advised on that one. And so a great loss to us all. That's two members we've lost in a very short space of time. It's quite sad. Are there any other members that would like to say a few words? If not, then, oh, sorry, Jill.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, when you come in as a new councillor and you're trying to kind of establish who everyone is and what everyone does. I remember Richard coming over and talking to me in my very first council meeting and introducing himself and trying to find out where I was from in rugby. And he was always, whenever I then saw him, he was always great at remembering information. So he'd come up and ask how my daughter was, or he'd come up and ask how committees had gone in rugby or whatever. And that's the thing I always remember. Yeah, politically, we didn't always agree. But as a human being, it was really nice to have somebody that you could, you know, kind of remember that sort of information about you. And he was so proud of his family, and he was always talking about the Brooks School in rugby. And so that's the thing I'm going to remember most about Richard.
Yes, again, sad loss. We lost two very good members recently. Okay, well, thank you for that, members. I'd like now to ask Sally to bring in a external attendees, if I may, please. We're looking at Alison Doyle, objecting to item three. And Debbie Hughes is a head teacher at the Tyne Meadows, as was expected. We will have two representatives for Kingsbury Quarry as well. There are no objectors to speak on that particular one.
The guests have already been brought in, so everyone's here.
Thank you very much indeed. Okay, moving on then, apologies, Helen.
We had apologies from councillor Anne Parry and councillor Wallace Redford's replacing her for this meeting.
Thank you. And I know that councillor Dervix is also now substituting as well on this particular committee, albeit for a short time. Right, members, do we have any disclosures of pecuniary or non-pecuniary interest, please? Yes, councillor Riley.
Thank you, Chair. I've got a non-pecuniary interest in application 002. I am a member of Cozal Town Council, who have considered and voted on this application today. And I've also disclosed an interest on the previous time. Member and have been working with the residents.
Okay, thank you very much indeed for that. I just noticed a bit of a breakup there. Members, I'm just wondering if you don't need to, could you turn your video off and see if that improves the sound quality? Just to try it and see if it improves the sound quality a bit. Okay, then, moving on to delegated decisions. There are none.
Sorry, before you move on.
So I think there's another.
Oh, sorry, councillor Dervix, I didn't see you come up there.
It's just to reiterate that I have an interest in the, in both applications on this meeting due to my membership of the planning board at North Warwickshire Borough Council, as they have already made submissions towards this. I will be withdrawing before we go into that part of the the meeting where we discuss the planning applications.
Okay, thank you very much, Your Honour.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to move on then to minutes of the previous meeting. Have members had an opportunity to look through that? Are there any comments they wish to raise? Okay, thank you for that then. There are no delegated decisions. I think that's, sorry, I just skipped over the minutes, didn't I, Helen? Thank you. So if there's nothing else, then we can move on to the first application, which is planning application NWB/20CC002, installation of a second temporary classroom and retention of the existing temporary classroom until September 2022 at High Meadow Community School, Norton Road, Coles Hill. Sally is our presenting officer. Would you like to go, Sally?
Good morning. Thank you, Chair. If I can just share my screen, and I will put my photo presentation up, so if I can just find that. Can I confirm that everyone can actually see my presentation?
Yeah.
Okay. And hopefully, it's the version. Okay, right. Good morning. Sorry for that delay. As Chair said, this application is for High Meadow School and for two temporary classrooms. The application details are actually for the retention of the existing temporary classroom that is on the school premises at present, the installation of a second temporary classroom, and for the retention of both until September 2022. This is a complicated application to present to you, so please bear with me. I'm firstly going to run through the recent planning history for the school. Next, to explain the reasons for the current planning application, and then show you the details of the current proposal, and show you my site photos. And finally, I shall give you my reasons for my recommendation of approval. This is the fourth planning application for High Meadow School, and the fourth time that development at the school has been discussed by Regulatory Committee in the last 12 months. The school is in Coles Hill, and it was a one-form entry infant school. Cabinet approved its expansion to a one-form entry primary school in 2017, which generated the need for four additional classrooms. The school is on a restricted site. There are steep slopes over much of the area and overhead power lines, which reduce the area available for use. If I can just show you, there's a line of power, overhead power lines that run in this direction across the site. And this part of the site is steeply sloping down towards Litchfield Road and down towards Rose Road. So that part of the site is not usable for development. There's a single access from Norton Road into the site, which is at which is at this point here, off Norton Road, which has to be used by both the school and construction traffic. An access has to be created along the northern edge of the school to reach the construction site for the four classroom building that has been approved. Sorry, there's a wrong button. The full classroom extension is actually in this location, and to reach that, an access route has to be opened round to the northern side of the school buildings. I'm showing you here the approved plan for the four classroom extension. The main planning application for the expansion was submitted in May 2019 and was granted consent by Regulatory Committee in September 2019. That application is not under review and does not form part of the consideration of this current application. A planning application for a temporary classroom positioned on the school playground was submitted in May 2019 for use by the school's first year three class, which started in September, until the main construction works are completed. The application submitted in May showed the temporary classroom in this location on the playground. A committee in August 2019, members rejected the temp as it was originally submitted in order that a revised position be agreed to reduce the impact on neighbours. However, the temp was installed during the summer holiday in August 2019 before consent was granted. A committee in September 2019, the temp was approved in a new position, rotated 90 degrees to the west. The building was to be sorry, I've just lost my place. Okay, the building was to be rotated 90 degrees to the west and was to be relocated in the installed position from the installed position, sorry, to the approved location with a condition that it be removed from that new location by the 30th of September 2020. Relocating the temporary classroom is a complex procedure. It's not just a case of picking it up and spinning it round. It's a difficult operation, requiring enough space and a crane for the disassembly, storage, and reassembly onto new foundation pads. And then the reconnection of the electrics and drainage services. The entire operation would take about 10 days to complete at a cost of approximately £35,000. It proved not possible for this work to be carried out with the school in operation. And there was not enough time during either the half-term holiday in October or the Christmas holidays, as had been expected. A further planning application was submitted to regularise the temporary classroom until it could be relocated during the Easter holiday in April this year, 2020. There were three reasons given at that meeting for the recommendation of approval. Firstly, the building was to be retained for a temporary period, and the impact on neighbours would be temporary, which at that time was for a further four months. Secondly, the separation distance and the aspect of the building to the houses in Rose Road was considered, and while the building was acknowledged to have an impact on neighbours, it was considered not bad as to justify a recommendation of refusal. Immediate removal of the building would have disrupted education on the site, possibly to a significant degree. The operational needs of the school are a material planning consideration and must be weighed in the balance. Members resolved at that meeting to approve that application in January 2020 this year, subject to the recommended conditions and a further condition on noise mitigation following the issues raised by residents at the meeting. The conditions imposed to reduce the impact to the building were for it to be repainted pale grey. Insulation to be installed beneath the building to reduce noise of movement from inside the building. An acoustic fence was to be installed between the temp and the boundary fences in Rose Road. The rear window was obscured to prevent overlooking. And the building was granted temporary consent until the 20th of April 2020. That was the last day of the Easter holiday, by which time it was to have been relocated to the approved location. We now come on to the reasons for this next planning application. In March, the COVID-19 national emergency resulted in the contractors cancelling the relocation of the temporary classroom during Easter holiday in April. The main contractor for the four classroom extension also suspended works on the site, which had been due to start soon after that time. The delay to the start of the main extension works means that the four classrooms will not now be ready by September 2020 and could now be delayed until June 2021. But social distancing measures required to prevent the spread of coronavirus means it could now take longer than the 52 weeks programmed. Also, if coronavirus cases increase again and we have a second lockdown, then there could be more delays to the completion of the development. The situation as it stands currently is that the easing of lockdown has allowed work to start on the main extension, but it is now behind schedule. Construction vehicles for the main works will be using the playground area to manoeuvre at least until the access road along that northern boundary has been built. The construction compound, if I can just show you, is coming in this area of the site, but they can't use that area until they've constructed this area of the access to the north of the buildings. For that reason, they will be using some of the car park to manoeuvre until they have that access point. The temporary classroom does not have panic consent as it stands and can no longer be rotated 90 degrees to the approved location. There isn't time for that manoeuvre and the installation of a separate, sorry, second temporary classroom during the summer holiday. In addition to the works and movements associated with four classroom extension, there isn't room for everything to happen at once. In September, there will be a year three and a year four class to accommodate. The applicant is looking at alternative looking at alternative options to the temporary classrooms. They had looked at that before they submitted this application, including the use of other school sites. Those options weren't acceptable for reasons including the problems of moving children between school sites and the adverse impact it would have on pupils' education. And for these reasons, the application that you, before you today, has been submitted. I'm now going to run through the actual details of this current application. So this application seeks consent to retain the first temporary classroom in its current location for a second classroom positioned on the grass bank west of the playground and the retention of both the buildings until September 2022. The classrooms are 12 metres by 6 metres and 3 and a half metres in height. They will be installed on concrete pad foundations, as was the first classroom. The slope of the school site resulted in the first classroom having a maximum height at, on the eastern side of the building, maximum height of 4.06 metres. The sloping bank, grass bank, is higher than the playground. Therefore, the second classroom will be installed at a greater height than the first by approximately a metre higher, giving a maximum height on the eastern side of the building of 5.14 metres. The plans show the windows of this second temporary classroom facing towards Rose Road to be obscured to prevent overlooking. I've had comments from neighbours, and they have asked for the windows on the east elevation. See if I can just go back to show you. On this elevation, this faces towards Norton, 29 Norton Road. They've asked for windows on that eastern elevation to also be obscured. It's not something I'm recommending. I do believe that there's it's not necessary to do so because there's an oblique view to the houses in Rose Road from that window, which is largely obscured by the existing temporary classroom. And there's a greater distance to the house in Norton Road from that window than the existing building. The details of the application show that noise insulation will again be installed beneath this second classroom to reduce, reduce the impact of noise. A condition is recommended for screening to be provided around the stepped entrance. That's to prevent overlooking by anyone standing at the top of that step into the classroom. This is condition three. The application is seeking consent for the temporary classes to be on-site until September 2022. We have had objections to this time period, asking why it's for two years when the build should only take one year. The date proposed gives flexibility if there's a rising coronavirus and another lockdown causing more delay. A condition is recommended for the classrooms to be removed by September 2022 or at the first practicable opportunity following completion of the construction of the four classroom block. This would allow time for the deconstruction and removal works of that class, of the classrooms, which may again need to be done during the school holiday. So there could be a scenario where the main classrooms are completed, pupils can move into it, but the temporary classrooms can't be. Pupils can move into it, but the temporary classrooms can't be removed from site because the school is in operation. We need to wait for another holiday. If the timing of the condition is changed and set too tight, it could result in another planning application for a further retention of the buildings being needed. Objections have also been raised to the use of the two classrooms outside of school times. And I've recommended condition eight to restrict the hours of use, which in the agenda, or rereading now, I realise it actually needs a bit of tweaking to ensure that the building can't be used at weekends and to give flexibility for cleaners and teachers to be able to use the building outside in those hours. So I'm actually recommending a different wording, which if I can give you now or shall I give you at the end? Do it now.
Do it now, please.
Okay, thank you. I'm recommending the change to the temporary classrooms hereby permitted shall not be used outside the hours of seven thirty to four thirty on weekdays, that's meaning Monday to Friday, or at any time on weekends, except for preparation by classroom staff and cleaning and maintenance and use for parent teacher consultations until no later than seven o'clock, nineteen hundred hours or no more than three weekdays in a school year in each classroom. I'm hoping that gives flexibility for there to be the parent teacher consultations in each of the classrooms to stay there until seven at night and then I've also extended that to four thirty in the afternoon for pupils to be in the building because there are after school clubs that finish at four fifteen, so to give them a little bit of time to leave the building.
Sally, can I just ask on that particular point, you mentioned three evenings and I could just run that a little bit?
Yes, so. Or no more than three weekdays in a school year in each classroom until and that's until seven o'clock and that's to allow for the parent teacher consultations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If I can take you now through my site photos. So this is a photo I took in June last year, June 2019, before the classroom was installed. This I've taken more recently, so this is the temporary classroom as it stands on site now. And the land to the right is the application site, so the second temporary classroom will come in this location. This is the side of the existing temporary classroom. And this photo shows the slope of the site. On the playground itself, there is a gentle slope and that you can see by the the height of the skirting at the bottom of the building to install it level went at its lowest point as it could at this northern side and the skirting then obviously increases in height as the slope drops away. An acoustic fence was installed between the temporary classroom and the boundary fences in Rose Road. Residents have asked for more acoustic fencing to be extended along the north and the east boundaries and further along the southern boundary. So this is looking along the southern boundary, looking west. The site for the classroom is coming in at this point. And as I say, residents have asked for the acoustic fencing to be extended along that boundary. I haven't recommended it along there because I think it could potentially have an impact on the tree roots there. And the classroom is actually three metres further away from the boundary than the existing classroom. So I think on balance, it would be better not to put the acoustic fencing there, so I haven't recommended that. Along the north and the east boundaries, the classroom is much further and I don't think acoustic fencing would actually have an impact there. This, as I say, is looking west towards the with the site for the classroom is on the right hand side of this photo. The tyres in the photo would be removed and the distance of the side of the temporary classroom would be seven metres from that boundary. This is the view of the site for the second classroom again. The tyres would be removed and there's a tree. This is a hornbeam tree that would need to be removed to cite the classroom in this location. This is looking towards the northern boundary of the school site and this is forty one Norton Road ahead of us. This again is the site for the for the classroom and the neighbouring property on this side is twenty nine Norton Road. This is looking again at the site for the second classroom. The tree here is the one to be removed. This cherry tree is to be retained. A condition is recommended for a landscape and ecological management plan requiring the planting of trees in compensation for the loss of that hornbeam tree. This is a photo I took last November when I was on site and I think it just shows in context again the existing temporary classroom and the site for this second classroom. This is the view looking south towards the rear of the houses in Rose Road. There would be a distance of nineteen metres between the classroom and the rear wall of the houses in Rose Road. I'm actually stood at this back to the cherry tree, so I'm the furthest point away from the neighbouring properties. At the side of the classroom is closer. This is the view from the rear garden of Rose Road, a house in Rose Road, looking back towards the site. And I'm stood at this point with my back against the rear wall of the house to show the length of the rear garden, which is approximately eleven and a half metres. And then the temporary classroom would be another seven metres beyond. There's a distance of nineteen metres between the rear wall and the side of the classroom. This is a view from the boundary of twenty nine Norton Road, looking looking west towards the site for the second classroom and the first classroom is in position. This is the entrance gates to the school. There's a single vehicle access and one pedestrian access, so it is a narrow pinch point into the school site and there's no alternative access into the school. I'm showing this photo because this is looking along the northern boundary, looking west and it's this area that is needed to be extracted, to be removed, to create the access to allow construction vehicles round to the north of the school. And again, this is the area that will need to be removed, so it's removing that section to create the access. I'm going back over my some of my previous site photos as well. Now, this was to show, this is the installation of the first temporary classroom and to show the reason that it was in an elevated position where we thought it was slightly lower. So this is the skirting on the northwestern corner is point four of a metre in height. But it ends up its highest point one metre in height, given the building a total height of four point zero six metres. There's a distance of two point eight metres to the boundary with Norton, twenty nine Norton Road. And this is looking north along that eastern boundary. To the rear of the existing building on site, there's four point eight metres to the boundary with Rose Road. And it's at this point that the acoustic fence has been installed. There's a distance of sixteen metres between the first temporary classroom and the rear of the houses in Rose Road. And there would be nineteen metres between the second classroom and the houses in Rose Road. So further three metres into this school site. The consent for the retention of this building until the Easter holiday in April was conditioned for the acoustic fence to be installed, the building to be painted grey and for the noise insulation under the building and all those things were carried out to reduce the impact. I've got some photos now that were provided by neighbours, some of them, this is before the temporary classroom was installed. So photo during the installation process, you can see the concrete pads being constructed and this again is in August last year prior to the installation of the classroom. This is the classroom on the concrete pads as it was installed. And this is the view from, I think, thirty one Buzz Road to show the impact on that property. And this is a view from the kitchen window, twenty seven Rose Road, before the temporary classroom was painted, actually is now pale grey rather than that yellow colour. And this is the view from the garden of twenty nine Norton Road, again showing the existing temporary classroom on site. So if I can come finally to my reasons for recommending approval for the application. Firstly, the application is for a temporary period. The two temporary classrooms do have an adverse impact on the neighbouring residents. And while the impact would be for a longer period than was previously approved, it does remain to be for a temporary period. Secondly, the previous planning approval accepted the separation distance between the classroom as it currently stands on site and the neighbouring houses. The two classrooms subject to this application are no closer than that previously approved. Thirdly, measures are to be taken on the second temporary classroom to reduce the impact with obscuring the windows facing towards Rose Road, screening the steps to prevent any overlooking and for there to be insulation beneath the floor to reduce noise. A condition is also recommended to control the hours of use of both classrooms. The Covid nineteen national emergency has had a severe impact on both the education of children over the last few months and on the speed of progress of development at the school. The operational needs of the school and the need to provide the accommodation for the pupils are a material planning consideration, which must again be weighed in the planning balance. I acknowledge that there is an impact on the neighbouring residents as a result of the two classrooms, but on balance, because that impact is for a time, my recommendation again is one of approval, subject to the recommended conditions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much indeed, Sally. Kate, you have a question?
Yeah, just if I may, Sally, just a point of clarification. I'm very, very concerned about any loss of trees anywhere. But I just want clarification that the cherry, the rather beautiful cherry, you can actually guarantee it will not be affected in any way. In that very first photograph you showed.
Shall I go back to the photos?
Yeah, it just looked as if it would be awfully close and actually probably affect the crown of the tree with the height of the building. It may not affect the roots, but I'm concerned about the crown of the tree. Could and particularly as it's going to be there for a while, it may certainly affect the shape in which that tree, if you like, branches out. So if you wouldn't mind going back to them.
Certainly, yeah. Right, am I in, no.
Presentation.
Sorry, it takes me a while to find it again. Okay. I think the most, yeah, that's the, probably the best photo. I agree with you. Yes, it is going to impact the crown of that tree. It's actually going quite close to the tree trunk.
Will it go? I mean, obviously with the temporary classroom, it won't dig down too far, so it may not affect the roots. My concern is the crown.
Yeah, I agree with you. As I say, I think because the hornbeam tree has been there, I think that has restricted the growth of the crown on this side anyway, but it is still going to need some trimming. Certainly. Because it's the concrete pads, it's not the whole length of the tree root that will be impacted. And I haven't put a condition for a no dig foundation, but I think there would need to be care on the pads that are very close to those tree roots. So I don't think a condition is necessary, but I do think care needs to be taken there for the installation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sally.
Good question, Kate, actually, because obviously it is a big tree. There's no doubt about it. You could actually probably do with a little bit of a haircut, even so, it's a lovely looking tree.
Yeah.
I think you're right. Castlework.
Thank you, Chair. Questions I have firstly, if we retain this temporary classroom, classroom one in the position it's in, that will be overturning the decision that was made by the planning committee in January of this year, less than six months ago. So I'd like to know, A, why, what are the technical reasons why that classroom cannot be rotated? And secondly, have there been any material changes in planning guidance since January that would influence our decision today? Thank you.
In terms of the technical reasons for the rotation, it is because there are so many things happening at once in that small area. And because of the coronavirus, it has restricted the time available. So the construction works have been delayed, that construction of the route to the north of the school hasn't been implemented yet. So because of that, the contractors for that main extension can't reach and set up their compound to the west of the school buildings. They're having to use the playground for manoeuvring. And then on top of that, if you try rotating that classroom, which as I say, takes at least ten days, and then install the second classroom, there isn't time for all those operations all to be carried out at once. So it's had a knock on effect for the reasons for the delays in starting. It's brought everything together and that's more space to be needed. In terms of the change in planning regulations and since the coronavirus, there have been relaxations. It might be in, Mary can help me answer some of that, but the government is encouraging construction to go ahead and for progress to be made.
Hey, would you like to comment?
There has been general policy encouragement from the government to assist any construction projects in a reasonable and proportionate manner. There's I think the connection here seems to be that for this construction project to proceed, it needs at the moment to occupy the playground for a manoeuvring space. And that is taking precedence over rotating the existing classroom. So I think there's nothing very specific in the guidance that's come from government. It is a material planning consideration. So far as it relates to this application, it is in general terms. And I think it probably does nothing more than, for present purposes, reiterate what would always be the position because the building project to provide accommodation to educate children, to educate children, was always a time sensitive and important piece of work to be, so I don't think there's been, I think there's perhaps more emphasis on facilitating construction projects. That does impact on the capacity to rotate the classroom. But it's not a sea change in policy and it is in general terms.
Thank you.
Chair, could I come back on that, Chair? Yeah. So to clarify, what we are saying is that the reason we're being asked to leave the classroom in the current position is just to make it a bit easier for the construction team to deal with it and because of time constraints and for no other reason.
The time constraints have come about because of the coronavirus. It's reduced the whole programme time available and there isn't physically room for the manoeuvring of the temporary classrooms, the storage. The deconstruction of that building is not straightforward, as I say. It needs to be taken apart, stored on that playground site and then reassembled while the, once the concrete pads have been put in. That takes a period of time, during which time that's preventing access to the main contractors using that playground area. So by doing that operation of relocating the classroom, it's reducing the impact and then the whole programme is going to take a longer period of time.
Okay, thank you. Castle Rickards.
Chair, my question is almost the same as councillor Warwick's, but it seems to me it has really just been confirmed that, you know, there's a recognition that the logistical stroke technical problems really have always been there in terms of relocating the first classroom. So it seems to me a primus is now given to that time factor.
Thank you. Councillor Simpson-Bins.
Thank you. Two things. Hearing the discussion about the cherry tree and feeling we didn't need to put a condition on it. Given that this is the fourth application coming in here, I kind of actually feel maybe we do need something in the conditions about the cherry tree. And secondly, on condition two, you've got the date of the 5th of September 2022, which I presume is the predicted first day back of the new term. Again, playing devil's advocate and worst case scenario, can we not move that date back to, say, 31st of August? Because I can see us getting to 5th of September, potentially someone then saying, oh, well, we haven't had a chance to get it away, get it moved away. It takes us two weeks. We can't do it half-term. We're looking at Christmas. I just kind of want to, I just think if we move that end date back a week, it just takes away some of that leeway without actually impacting. I appreciate it would likely be gone before then. But I don't want in September 2022, someone coming back and saying, oh, well, we can't do it half-term. We didn't get it done before the 5th of September. We're now looking at Christmas 2022. And this then just drags on and on.
I think it's a good point, Sally. I mean, can I just pick up on that? Because obviously the removal of it, and it can only happen during a term time. Sorry, not during term time, in holidays, et cetera. However, at some point, the classrooms will be redundant inasmuch as the children will have moved into the new classrooms. So is that thing we can explore, for example, saying that once they've moved into the new classrooms, then no occupancy of the temporary classrooms and then removal of said classrooms at the earliest opportunity. Picking up councillor Simpson's point, you've got to be a little bit careful how to legislate against that because anything could happen in that time and prevent them from removal, but at least they're not being occupied.
Yes, I think councillor Simpson-Vince was talking about bringing the date forward, weren't you, to August? Yes, so that it doesn't go into the new term time. Yeah, I mean, yes, we could do that because the intention is for it to be removed before that point. And so, yes, it would need to be during that summer holiday beforehand.
Yeah, I think if we know it takes them two weeks or 10 working days to remove it, then that date needs to be at least 10 working days before term starts because otherwise we could run into a, oh, well, we haven't got time to do it now and, yeah.
Right, the reason I put that date, thinking along those same lines, but thinking, okay, they would need that 10 days right up till the end. So that was, so rather than give them 10 days before the end of the summer holiday, I wanted to give them the flexibility that they had right to the end of the summer holiday. But I'm quite happy to, you know, recommend changing that date, yes. Yeah.
Okay, if you're happy with that.
Okay.
Moving on, councillor Gifford.
Thank you. My question is very straightforward. I think it's an excellent report. I've read the, not just the objections, but also the comments of support. And I've looked at the school website and it's an outstanding school. And my question really is, what would the effect be on the education of the children if we were to refuse this application? And I speak as someone who lives opposite a primary school and never has any problem.
The school did look, before submitting this application, for alternative sites to use, both within the school buildings themselves. I think at the last meeting, there was a discussion by members that there was the potential for the, a couple of the classrooms of the new four classroom block to be ready for children to move into before the whole thing was completed. And that would help provide some of that additional accommodation and prevent this need for the second classroom. That's no longer possible because of the slippage of the start of works. So there will be two classes arriving, 60 children in September that don't currently have classroom accommodation. As I say, other schools within Coles Hill were looked at, but to try and firstly, transport children to those, it causes transport and car movements in other areas that also have issues. And then to walk pupils between the two schools, it's disruptive to the school day at lunchtimes and things. And pupils with educational needs, it's not an appropriate undertaking. So for that reason, there really isn't much alternative to providing additional classroom facility on site. We did look at various options and this was deemed to be probably the least impactful.
Thank you, Sally. Can I just pick up the point, councillor Gifford? At some point shortly, we will be having Debbie Hughes, the head teacher, to speak and you can ask her that question if you so desire.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sort of very aware of the importance of education for children. And as I say, I live opposite a primary school. It causes me no problems at all and the noise of children playing in the playground, I don't find that upsetting, but obviously some people do.
Okay, well, thank you. We can have a discussion and debate on that particular element of it as well if you want to. Right, I don't have any more raised hand. Oh, we still do. Councillor Warwick again.
Sorry, Chair, to come back. I've just been mulling over. I too live directly behind a primary school and I don't have any issue with it. But have we, with this application, has there been any consideration to? Because it sounds an incredibly complicated operation, taking something down, storing it, blah, blah. Have we simply not considered building the second pad, moving Classroom One to Classroom Two's position and then recreating the pad for Classroom One and putting the new pad in the approved position from January with both classrooms rotated to the same alignment? Surely it would be easier to move it over like that around this man. So I'm just asking, has any consideration been given to moving Classroom One to Pad Two and putting the new one in the approved position from January? So both face the same way. There'd be no need for storage. You'll take one to the second position and deal with it that way. And they would both end up in the positions that would be beneficial.
I don't know if that was considered. The applicant is with us today and could answer possibly that technical question. I think there is still an issue putting the one classroom in the position that was approved in the last application because of the issue now of manoeuvring into the playground that it does need to do. It does need some of that playground space until the route to the north has been constructed. So in the six weeks' summer holiday, I don't think there's time to do all of that operation. But I agree, that would make sense, yes.
Can I, Sally, I mean, obviously you're not aware of that particular technical detail. Is it an opportunity to bring in the applicants for this at this time? That particular question. I don't want to get into debates or anything at this stage. Just answering a particular technical question that's been raised, which is relevant.
I can't see who we've got with this, unfortunately. Claire, yes.
Hi.
Sorry, may I answer the technical question, Chair?
Please do.
The temporary classroom is modular built. It comes in two sections. You're required to disconnect electrics, you're required to disconnect plumbing and you're required to dismantle it into two discrete pieces in order to crane it over. The work associated with the spinning it round 90 degrees or the work associated with putting it onto Classroom Number Two pad is equal. The main difficulty with the moving it, say, round 90 degrees, which I did not report to the last regulatory committee because I was unaware of it, is the associated drainage works required to ensure that the toilet block within the classroom is adequately serviced. Both are doable. The problem I will have is that I will have two contractors in a very constrained site rather than one. However, if that is the regulatory committee's decision that that's what you want, logistically, I will make it happen.
Thank you very much indeed. Right, well, councillor Warwick, I think that's something we can discuss a little bit later on, if that's okay with you. Okay, right, thank you. You're muted, I think, aren't you?
Yeah, Chair, thank you very much indeed. That sounds reasonable. Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll discuss that at the appropriate juncture, okay? Right, thank you. Now, I'm just looking down the list and the next, if there are no other questions on Sally's presentation, which was very thorough, Sally, and thank you very much indeed, I'd just like to go to our county councillor, councillor Riley. Did you get that? Hello? Councillor Riley. I don't have a councillor Riley. Is he around?
He's still showing as being in the meeting, but I'm wondering if he's had some connection problems.
Okay, well, obviously we would normally go hear him first. Perhaps in the interest of brevity, we'll go on to, there are no other councillors, correct you, Helen?
That's correct. It's the public speaker now.
That's Alison, isn't it? So, okay, can we go to Alison then, please? And we'll bring councillor Riley in as soon as he gets back.
Can I just remind you, sorry, that you have three minutes to speak? I'll run a timer and I'll let you know when you've got there.
Thank you very much, Helen.
Okay, thank you. And as said before, this is our fourth time here discussing this. I just wanted noted by the committee that I fully object to this application. The Classroom One is still unauthorized in its position, as we've discussed. I think the issue, and I thank councillor Warwick for pointing it out, is that for it to flip into the agreed authorized position, it interferes with the second classroom and I think that's the main issue. But actually, I would strongly urge you to consider this if this does get approved, that we do that as a condition. My objections and the reasons to leaving it in its current position haven't changed from the other four. My amenity, loss of light, noise. The noise underneath the classroom has helped slightly, but we don't know because the children haven't been there since it's been put in. So all my objections and all your conditions that you put in previously still stand. I am concerned that this would overturn previous regulatory meetings where you've agreed that it should be moved. It was originally uninstalled and it was supposed to be there for six weeks. I'm now looking at a minimum of 156 weeks. That is inappropriate. It is a two-tiered system of planning. I feel that actually if, this doesn't seem a fair or just system because the applicant can mislead. There was lots of misleading information in the application. If at my displeasure you approve this, then I would ask for some conditions that the terms of usage actually be eight o'clock till 4:30. I do work from home, not at weekends. We have had the classroom used at half nine at night. I expect three weekdays at school up to 7pm. I think that's reasonable. Removal of the classrooms, if it does go ahead, then it doesn't need to wait for holidays because you can actually close off the classroom because the children won't be there. And actually, you can crane them out at the weekend and the residents have agreed to that. So I would ask for the classrooms to be removed ASAP. And I would also ask, as a condition, that if the classrooms do go ahead, that once the extension has been built, and I would like to note that the building of the road is happening at the moment, that cease of all use of temporary buildings for any reason should happen once the extension of the school has been built. So just to reiterate, I object. I would like you to consider that they still move the classroom, which would make our lives much easier in this 156-week temporary situation. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much indeed, Alison. Yes, I think you raised some very valid points there and thank you very much indeed. Members, are there any questions that you would like to ask Alison? Okay, I think you've picked up a couple of good points there and then we'll pick those up certainly with regards removal of the classrooms ASAP, yes. And we'll have a.
Sorry, Chair, councillor Phillips would like to speak.
Oh, sorry, councillor, thank you. Got you. Caroline.
Thank you, Chair. I attended the previous meeting about this and this. And I recall that I had a great deal of sympathy, sorry, I've forgotten your name, love, but for this speaker. And I'd like to back, if I may, your suggestion for limiting hours from half seven to eight o'clock. And as I said previously, I am a former night shift worker, so I appreciate how noise impacts on your quality of life if you keep working from home as you are. So I'd just like to say I do back your suggestion for eight o'clock.
Okay, thank you, councillor.
Thank you.
Alison, you did mention, you said that there was some misleading information in the application. Could you pick that up, please, for me?
Yes, I think that the application in itself did not refer, they were referring to the temporary classroom as the existing temporary classroom, where it's an unauthorized-positioned temporary classroom. I don't believe that we've actually had a report and/or that there's been serious consideration around moving the children to other options. They knew this school was happening in 2017. They've had three years. I think it's a moral education strategy to actually offer places. It's unfair on the children and parents in terms of expectations to say that they have a place at a school where there isn't even a building to accommodate them. I think to say that there's parking off-site, that hasn't been agreed. The only other parking that's available is the community centre car park. That has not been agreed by the town council. So I think that in terms of, thank goodness, most of you have been at our journey with the four different regulatory meetings. And I'd just like to bring in another point that whilst I am absolutely, I know it's about children, I know it's about their education. You know, that is immaterial to planning, really. This should be about a planning application and not, and I know it's got to be weighted against children, but whether it's an outstanding school or not is really irrelevant in a planning application. So I'd just like to point that out. But there is plenty of misleading. But there is plenty of misleading. I have in my objections detailed all the misleading areas in the application.
Okay, thank you. Sally, would you like to just comment on any of those, or perhaps Ian, if necessary?
Yes, if I can just come back on the parking availability. Apparently, parking has been made available for staff and arrangement for a facility in Roman Way. There's a car park area that teachers have access to. It's a nine-minute walk away from the school, so it's not using the town council's car park. It is a different car park in Roman Way. I think that's the only point that I'll come back to on that point.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, thank you again, Alison. Okay, I'd like to bring Councillor Riley in, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, thank you.
Oh, super. Thanks very much indeed. Just a couple of three points, if you don't mind, Chair. First of all, it's recognising that this has been a very challenging set of four applications. From my perspective, I think it has called into question the role of the county councillor as applicant and determinant, and you will have heard what the residents have said. Alison's not alone when she speaks, in terms of the confidence that they have lost in the situation and the process, the planning process as it moves forward. I think, Chair, that when you've spoken previously together with Jill, you've hit the key issue with this application, and that is one of removal. Accepting that a resident's position, Alison's position, is one of refusal, then if the county regulatory committee won't support the refusal, then the issue at hand is the removal of both structures at the very earliest opportunity. I think that the issue of add dates is understandable in terms of coronavirus impact and the challenges of construction, but the key issue is the condition which talks about removal of the classroom at the very earliest incident or opportunity. My interpretation of that is that once the new four classrooms are built and ready for occupation, then plan should be made to remove both of the temporary classrooms from the school site. I would like to flag something that Alison said in her presentation, which I know that I have discussed with Sally Peani, and that is about an additional condition around the fact that once the four permanent classrooms are ready for occupation, the use of the two temporary classrooms should cease. So just to be clear about that, the key issues to be considered in terms of the conditions if members do look to approve this application is, one, the removal of the two temporary classrooms from site at the very earliest opportunity, and then, secondly, a requirement that once the four permanent classrooms are open for business, use of the two temporary ceases. That's all from me. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. I think we picked those points up, and they're coming across quite loud and clear, to be honest. Oh, excuse me, a moment. Coming across loud and clear. Thank you very much indeed for that. Right, Helen, we don't have any more objectors. We do have the head teacher would like to speak now.
I'll also be giving you three minutes and let you know when you've got 30 seconds left if you've not finished.
And prior to just going there, councillors, if there are any questions, and one or two have been already raised that are relevant for the head, and please, can you raise them during the questioning time for her? Okay, off you go when you're ready.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me to speak on behalf of our wonderful school. We're an academically high-achieving school that consistently beats national and county standardised test results, and we're rightly proud of this. However, the things that really make our hearts sink is our relationships with our amazing school community, our parents and our children. They fill every day with joy. They deserve the very best, and for this reason, I'm here today. At High Meadow, we base our learning and development on our eight learning powers. These learning powers are characteristics that we hope every High Meadow child will embody as active and responsible citizens of Coles Hill and Warwickshire. Our first learning power is kindness. It states, "We are kind. We treat every living thing with kindness and care." For the next couple of minutes, I would like you to reflect on the experiences of our year two and three classes over the past few months, and I'd like to ask whether we, as the adults in their lives, are going to act with kindness. Will the decision that is reached today be one with the children and kindness at its heart? Our year two and three children have come to know High Meadow as a place of safety and kindness. Challenge and high expectations, yes, but at the core, safety and kindness. We know this because they tell us. The last four months, these children have experienced a huge change, one over which they had no power. They have been separated from their friends, their friends help keep them safe. They have been separated from their teachers, their teachers help keep them safe. They have been separated from the routine and familiarity of our school. This also helps keep them safe. They know that High Meadow is a place of kindness and safety. They can trust the adults to treat them with kindness and keep them safe. Many professionals believe that COVID-19 and the enforced lockdown will leave many of our children with a range of difficult emotions to process. We have planned for this. Many professionals also believe that some of our children will have experienced trauma. We have planned for this. Many professionals advise that when children return to school in September, they will need to feel safe and loved. We have also planned for this. Our children know that High Meadow is a place of kindness and safety. Our children in year two and three are such a wonderful mix of young people. Some have special education needs, some have serious medical needs, some have social and emotional needs, some find learning challenging, but all of them need a safe place to return to in September, a space that is familiar to them, routines that are familiar to them, faces that are familiar to them. They know that High Meadow is full of kind people. If after five months of being out of school, they have to return to an unfamiliar space with unfamiliar routines, with unfamiliar faces, they will not feel safe. I have got a little bit more, if I could ask, just for a couple more seconds.
You're muted, Chair.
Thank you. Sorry, Debbie, yes, if it is two seconds, fine, otherwise, go then.
We all have a duty of care to our year two and three children. We all have a duty to help them feel safe. Please support the application for a temporary year four classroom. Our children have had enough uncertainty. They miss their teachers and friends. We have the power in this room. They need the adults here to make the right decision for them, as they have no voice. We can show them their acts of huge kindness by making the right decision.
Okay, thank you very much indeed, Debbie. That's fine, thank you. Okay, right, there are a few things that have been raised, obviously, one that was by Alison, the objector. Can I ask you first, before I bring in Councillor Gifford? Elba, any alternative locations have been explored? Now, Sally did mention that, but can you just go over those, please, for us?
You're muted, sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yes, of course. So there were several other alternatives looked at. One of them was to look at existing spare temporary classrooms at alternative schools, new temporary classrooms at alternative schools, using existing spare accommodation at alternative schools, and utilising existing spare accommodation at other local Warwickshire County council own sites. Our biggest concern about this is, as an outstanding primary school, we're proud of the fact that our school is built on relationships.
Debbie, can I just, please, can just answer the question? I appreciate what you're saying, but it's the location that we were asking for. Have you explored other alternate locations? Are they suitable, or if not, why not, please?
They're not suitable because our year four teacher is an NQT, so she's starting her teaching career in September, so she needs to be near her mentor. The children in both of those classes, in year three and four, we have a real mixture. We have three children with special educational needs, so they need to have access to the separate learning spaces we have on the main site. We also have a child with serious medical issues, so she needs to have access to both myself and another trained person who gives her injections up to three times a day. So by having her off the site, that makes it more difficult. From a safeguarding point of view, the designated safeguarding lead and the other designated safeguarding lead is also on this main site, so we would have no safeguarding leads if they, if the class, if both of those classes were to go on to another site. And then from a transport point of view, moving the children backwards and forwards for our assemblies, for before and after-school clubs, we offer a whole variety of after-school activities for the children. So that would mean even more traffic on the roads, because children would be expected to be moved backwards and forwards from wherever the other sites were, wherever the children were, basically. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's fine, I think a good explanation there, thank you. Councillor Gifford.
It's a question I was asked earlier, really, which is, if we were to refuse this application, like some of the objectors seem to want us to do, what would the effect be on the school and the education of children? And also, it has been suggested that the classrooms be removed as soon as the new classrooms were built. Is there any reason why that should not be the case?
I'll answer your second question first, if that's okay. We're absolutely more than happy for the classrooms to be removed as soon as possible, please, actually, because that frees up more playground space for us. So the sooner the better, so absolutely. In terms of the impact on the children's education, it would be huge, because we have no spare space on site. We run a before and after-school club in the school hall, so we can't put any of the classes in the school hall, and it's also, the school hall is also used for assemblies and the teaching of PE and lunchtimes. So it would have a huge impact if the children were educated elsewhere. As I've said before, we are an outstanding school, and we have, we share lots of our teaching with lots of other schools, so we don't just impact on our children's education, we have a massive impact on hundreds of children across Warwickshire. We have teachers from all over Warwickshire, and actually internationally, come to see our teaching practice. So it's not just about our 150 children in our school, we impact on the learning of hundreds and hundreds of children because of our outstanding teaching here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Redford. You're muted. You're muted.
I can get it. Are you hearing me?
Yes, you can.
I'm having a lot of difficulty. The programme is breaking up. I'm going to have to switch off and try and get back in, just to let you know.
Did you want a question? Did you have a question?
No, no, just to tell you that I've got this problem, and I'll try and get back in.
Okay, thank you. Right, members, are there any other questions you would like to ask of Debbie? Right, there's only one that was mentioned, and perhaps I am, it was, obviously, we've been talking about removal, and I can understand you want the playground back as quick as possible. Alison did mention about different times. Now, I've got to admit it, I was writing something else down at the time when she mentioned it. The timings, this is, I think, is it, Sally, can you come back on this one? The timings not used by pupils outside of 7.30 to 16.00, did Alison suggest an alternate time to that? I can't remember.
Alison suggested a time of eight o'clock in the morning as the earliest to start, rather than 7.30. So I don't know if that, for what time school actually, you go into the building then.
Can you answer that one, please, Debbie?
Of course. The teachers tend to get into school about 7.30, but that's one teacher, basically, accessing each of those portable classrooms. And then they leave about 5.30. But the children don't get into the classrooms until 10 to nine, and then they leave at quarter past three.
Okay, thank you for that.
The timing, as it's suggested, doesn't, it doesn't prevent teachers using the classroom, it's to stop the pupils using the classroom. So would the eight o'clock time for pupils be a problem?
No, no, that's absolutely fine.
Yeah, so the teacher can go in?
Yeah.
I don't know if Alison is, yeah, how Alison feels, yeah, but there may be...
Yeah, I think in turn, it is reasonable for people to come in early to set up and get things open, but it's not the children arriving, so I'm going to ask Alison just to put a hand up if she feels that's acceptable, that particular point, Alison? Just raise your hand and say hello, yes?
I'd like to make the point, I don't think it's acceptable. It's also, you know, it's the light, the lights go on in, you know, we're going into darker mornings, so it's also the lights as well. So I think eight o'clock is a good compromise, unless you agree that the classroom should flip, as it should, and then it won't be an issue what time.
Okay, now, thanks for that, Alison, okay. All right, thank you for that. Okay, right, I'm going to move on now, and Debbie, thank you very much indeed for your presentation. Thank you. Now then, I now have no more speakers, but I do have, obviously, the applicant with us if we have any technical questions. So, members, are there any other technical questions that you want to ask? If not, I'm going to go into debate. Councillor Warwick.
Thank you, Chair. Right, well, I'll make my point upfront, I am feeling kind this morning, I'm feeling kind to the applicant, and I'm also feeling kind to the objectors. We are looking at an application that should have been for a temporary classroom for six weeks, and it's now running into three years. That's what we're looking at, something for half a term that we're now looking to authorise for three years. That cannot be reasonable, Chair. It cannot be reasonable. These children need an education, and the people who live near to the school need a decent quality of life, and it is striking that balance. I'll tell you where I am with this. I am at a point where I would be comfortable to approve this until the 31st of October next year, 2021, to give us the 12 months that it's actually needed for, and some leeway, and the half-term holiday to remove it, so whether that's the 31st of October or a few days into November. But I would want to see both classrooms aligned, I want to see that 90-degree rotation as we saw in January, because I can see no valid planning reasons, not logistical reasons, no valid planning reasons, not to respect the decision that was made in January. So if it comes to it, I'm happy to move it on that basis, that it's approved, but both classrooms are aligned with classroom one where it should be, classroom two alongside it, but restricted until the end of the half-term October-November time 2021. That gives us adequate time to do what we should do as a county. COVID has been a crisis, it should not be an excuse for everything. Let's get on with it and get it sorted for the benefit of all concerned.
Well, thank you very much indeed, Councillor Warwick. Can I just, before I pick over anybody else who'd like to speak, I'm just waiting to see if our Councillor Redford's come back on. I can't see him at the moment. Councillor Redford, if you're available, can you make yourself known?
He's not back in yet, Chair.
Okay.
I can see if we can dial him in.
Would you do that, please?
I think Isabel's here. Isabel, can you try and dial Wally Redford back in for us?
Will do.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, then. But, Councillor Warwick, thank you much indeed. I'm sure that Sally and Ian have picked up your points there. Right, Councillor Gifford. Right, Councilor Gifford.
Yes, I would like to propose that we grant the application with the conditions as per the excellent report produced by our planning officer.
Thank you. Councilor Simpson-Vince.
Sorry, I'm just getting all the buttons on and off. Be interested, so Claire was saying that she felt that we could move that temporary classroom 90 degrees. So first of all, I'd like confirmation from her that we could do that because that's what was supposed to happen in the first place. In terms of timings going in and out of that classroom, I wonder whether, the only thing I'm thinking of is whether they need slightly longer hours temporarily in terms of cleaning because the cleaning times presumably for every classroom are going to be longer now. In terms of using the school hall for before and after school clubs and assemblies, well, I think in September that's not going to be happening. So the school hall would be available because they're not doing assemblies from September and the schools are trying to figure out before and after school. However, even within all of that, education is a, is a material consideration within the MPP yet. And I think at the moment, given the current climate, it's probably got a bit more weight on it than normal because of the situation we're in. And I speak as that's someone who's been homeschooling to various degrees of success since March. So on balance, I think, you know, the, the second, I, I completely understand the need for that second classroom to go in because we are in an odd situation. I'm unhappy about the end date. I think it should be absolutely as soon as we get these classrooms out. But I would like that end date moved forward just a little bit, just to not find us in another situation in 2022. Because we don't want this coming back a fifth and sixth time or however many. If we could get that classroom moved 90 degrees, I would be much happier with this. I, I do sympathise with doing the homeschooling. I appreciate, completely appreciate the toll this is taking on young children. So yeah, if we could have confirmation from Claire that we could move that classroom back to where it was supposed to be originally back in, was it January? I'm kind of losing track of how many of these we've had. And, and just go from there, please.
Okay, well, I do have, it's a good question and thank you. I was going to raise a particular point anyway because I think it has been raised earlier on and Council Warwick promoted that. Right, we have Mr Hughes, I don't know your first name, and Claire. Or would one of you two like to answer that question, please?
Can I just talk about the assemblies and the before and after school club, please? You're absolutely right, Councilor Simpson-Vince, that assemblies aren't allowed because we can't mix the class bubbles. However, before and after school club is allowed. The guidance came out a few days ago, so we are working our way through that. But we've got to keep the class bubbles in before and after school club. So we're sectioning up the school hall to be able to do that. And your point about cleaning as well, yes, you're absolutely right. We've got a much deeper cleaning rotor in place now and from September as well. So thank you for raising that.
Claire, would you like to come in? Claire, you're very faint. I don't know what's the problem. I can't hear you.
Is this fair? My Madonna mic let me down. We had originally planned to move the classroom at Easter. Unfortunately, lockdown started on 24th of March, so the classroom can be moved. We had planned to move. The only reason it didn't move was because of lockdown. The sighting of the temporary classroom, we had about eight options and we looked at the sighting of the temporary classroom in terms of keeping it as far away from neighbours as we could. We would welcome any condition that the committee would wish to place regarding safeguarding the cherry tree because I've already asked those questions. And we are already starting to build the new access route so that we could have given the playground back to the school for use for physical education. But I can move the classrooms. It's going to be tight over the summer holidays, but I can do it.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just caveat, so I'm not a hostage to fortune? We have to review these plans in terms of central government guidance regarding construction, social distancing and whether there to be a further lockdown, it would be out with our control.
Yes, I, I think we can all accept that. I think that's absolutely right. Right, I'm now picking up that, oh, sorry, Kate, I do apologise, Kate.
That's okay. I quite like to, Council Warwick, are you making that a proposal? Because I.
You did say proposal, yes.
No.
I, I like that proposal, Chair.
I, I do think this classroom could be moved 90 degrees. And I'm interested to hear a response to whether it could. We are looking at October 21, please.
Okay, who would like to answer that one, Claire?
Thank you, Chair. We, I would aim to move the classroom as quickly as possible. October 21 is tight. However, we're already discussing a partial completion of the expansion so that we could remove the classroom in advance of the timescale set. The reason we asked for the time to try and de-risk the process, obviously there's quite a lot of risk associated with the putting too tight timescale from our construction point of view and also the requirement, as I made the last regulatory committee, that we would not allow unauthorised or unapproved day situation to happen again. So if the committee were minded to reduce the, a time the temporary classroom was to be on site, but to allow situations deemed out with the, the council or anybody's control to be a matter for the planning officer and the Chair of the Regulatory Committee to agree, I would be happy to.
Yeah, I, I, I was going to say something along those lines, Claire. I think it's, we, I don't want us to come back to committee. Please. So I think that we now need to be absolutely pragmatic about this, members. Yes, that's our goal and yes, that's what we'd be aiming for. However, if there are extenuating circumstances, then it should be brought back, saved to myself. Then we can, I can look at that. And if I deem it necessary, I would then consult with the members. But otherwise, I'm assuming members would be happy for me to make that decision if, if it came to that point. Thank you very much indeed. Caroline.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I, I agree with the points that have been said. Particularly with Councilor Warwick, this has been going on for too long. The classroom was put in without permission. It's been going back and forth now. Let's, let's just get on with, with doing the job that should have been done a long time ago. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you very much indeed, members. Right, I'm going to draw the debate to a close. I'm going to ask Ian and Sally if they would like to just go over those particular things that we've now teased out along the lines of Councilor Warwick. Now, Councilor Warwick has made a proposal. I don't have the second yet, but I'm waiting for someone to.
I'm happy to second.
Counsel.
Second subject to all of those conditions we discussed.
Okay, now, would Sally or Ian like to ro, run through those conditions, the, the ones that we've now modified? And I'm picking up the removal of said classrooms earliest as possible. Low occupancy, the cherry tree condition, spinning the classrooms or, you know, moving it from one to the existing one into the new position and then the new one alongside in some form or other.
Okay, I, I have been typing as you debated.
I'm sure.
So I, I might not have captured everything right, but what I'm going to try and do now is upload so that you can all see some draft conditions. Forgive me when this goes wrong. Okay. Right, is, can you all see a document headed, beginning amended condition two?
Yes.
Yes, we can, yeah.
This is accelerating the cessation of use of the classrooms. Because there, there may arrive a point where the new classrooms are available, but because it's term time or for some other reason, there's a delay before the temporary classrooms can actually be removed. So the condition two in your report has been amended to provide that as soon as the new classrooms are available, the school has to stop using the temporary classrooms. And then the temporary classrooms have to be removed at the first practicable opportunity after that date. And then there's a long stop date when they have to be removed come what may, which is, it was 5th of September 2022. I've changed that to 22nd of August 2022 to allow the 10 working days cushion that one of the members of the committee spoke of. Okay. The condition eight is the hours of use. Now, I drafted it. It, it allows the temporary classroom, the temporary classrooms to be used starting from seven thirty. And, but it, on Monday to Friday, it bans any use of the classrooms on weekends or outside term time. But it makes, it, it creates an exception for preparation by classroom staff. So that's teachers, teaching assistants and so forth. And for them to be cleaned and maintained and for up to three parent teaching, parents' evenings basically, in, in the school year. So if that seven thirty start was switched to eight o'clock, eight AM, that wouldn't stop teachers or other classroom staff coming in and setting up the classroom for the day and doing their preparation. It wouldn't stop the cleaners coming in. It wouldn't stop the lights going on at seven thirty. So that, that could be changed to eight, Sally may have a comment on that, but I think that could be changed to eight AM and still allow the, 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 the staff to do the things that the head teacher described prior to the children arriving.
Sorry, we must obviously allow that part of it. I mean, you've got to prepare at some, at some point of the day, either late last thing at night or alternatively first thing in the morning. Most logical is first thing in the morning.
Yeah, and, and the condition allows for that so that, you know, the teacher, I suppose, the teacher could turn up at six AM and, and, and start preparing. The condition isn't going to stop that happening. It's just really the children arriving that, that is being restricted to the hours seven thirty to four thirty. As I say, I think if we switch that to eight o'clock, it wouldn't affect, it wouldn't affect the teachers and the classroom staff.
Okay.
And then on removal, oh, sorry, re, the, the relocation of the existing classroom. I have drafted this and it may read in an odd way because it doesn't refer to relocation. What I've tried to do is draft the condition so that there is freedom to decide whether to move the existing classroom to pad number two as Councilor Warwick suggested or, or some other way of doing it. But the point is that by a date that would be set, so that could be the October 2022, uh, 2021 date, those two temporary classrooms have got to be on the position shown in a drawing, which is the alignments that, that, that the committee want. I can add words to that which would be, unless the local planning authority otherwise agree or perhaps I could type in here, for example, which would allow, that would effectively be a delegation to the officers to agree an alternative date if unforeseen circumstances justified an extension of the deadline and the officers would consult with your Chair before agreeing to any such extension.
Absolutely.
So if I put, just for the purpose of illustration, if I put October 2021 in there, Sally would have to produce a, a, a suitable drawing that shows the desired locations of the two classrooms and we'll slot that into there. Would that serve the, well, meet the requirements of the committee?
First of all, Council Warwick.
Yeah, Chair, just, just briefly, if we go back to Alison the objector, we're talking about the conditions about lighting. If you remember, she did point out that if the classroom was moved through 90 degrees.
That's right.
Then a lot of those concerns go away because the lights would not be shining into her property because the windows would not be facing and along with the other objectors. So we, we are with condition eight, whilst I accept it, it isn't so pressing if the classroom is where it is meant to be. So I, I mean, if you want to confirm with the objector, that, that was the understanding I had. And, and the rest of it, I'm quite comfortable with and, and I'm sure you will be, be able to work with the officers with any, you know, final wording outside of this meeting, providing we understand clearly that we're going to be moving that classroom. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, I, I agree entirely, Council Warwick, thank you. And you're absolutely right, it was, I remember Alison saying exactly those, those words. So yeah, I'm happy with that. Other members happy with that? In that case, I would, now I believe we've got a proposer and Councilor Simpson-Vince has seconded it. Helen, how are we going to do the vote on this one? Is it a hands up?
Yes, no, I think, sorry, what we did last time was we just did the roll call through all the members just to make sure that no one was missed or nobody was inadvertently included in the vote that shouldn't be.
A comment? Okay then, over to you then, Helen.
Okay, bear with me one second. Just so I can make.
Scott, did you want to come in there quickly?
Oh, sorry.
Scott just wanted to work.
Yes, Chair, I was just, I just wanted to, I suppose, give, give advice on a little slight word of caution. I'm just concerned that we're talking about moving the, the classroom on to the new position and there hasn't been, and I know Claire says it can be done, but I'm, I'm just worried that things can come up. And I'm worried that there, that when they go to actually look at it, it might be the two classrooms positioned, I, I don't, I don't know that they've done any design work on that at all. So I'm just concerned that there might be something that would come up that would cause it to not happen. And I don't want you to have to bring it back to committee to have to consider that. So if you just had some words in there that allows you as the Chair to consider any extraordinary circumstances that might not enable that, that one classroom to be moved.
I think that might be a little step too far in this particular application. I'm, I'm really quite concerned about that particular one. That would be a bit too much because obviously what we're talking about now is fundamental to the proposal. I would be very reluctant to, to get that and I doubt, well, I could ask members if they would be willing to do that. But Claire.
I, I just wanted to say that we already have trenched out for drainage. We'd assumed that we were going to connect the second temporary classroom into the existing drainage line. The, the concern I have, and I'm, I'm just going to be perfectly honest, is that we're at the mercy of contractors and their supply chain, which has been severely disrupted by the pandemic. That's the outside circumstance that worries me in terms of a technical solution. I, I am sure that I can technically move the classroom. It's the question of what happens if something that I just haven't thought of, I can't even think of something, but it's, it's the, it's the unknown unknowns that worry me.
Okay, well, fine, and I, I can accept that one. I think that's a fair comment. If, if it is exceptional circumstances, then I think, yes, by all means, I can probably accept that one and I can take a view then whether or not we need to consult. But yes, I, I pick your point. But yes, I, I pick your point up, Claire, that's a valid point. If, if it's a nuclear option, for example, we can't do it for such and such a reason, then I do pick that up. And I think members will be quite happy to accept that simply because we don't, we are living in uncertain times. Okay, Sally.
The one question I had was that the stepped entrance into that number two classroom is off of the playground. Is there, I don't know if Claire can answer, if there's enough room to put that step and to, to abut the relocated classroom against it? Or does the classroom have to be spun around to take the access from the grass?
The stepped access is a temporary wooden structure, Sally. So we can probably Heath Robinson it while we're on site. I just sort, sort out access in accordance with the access requirements.
Okay.
It might mean that we've got a slightly longer platform at the top, but I'm sure we can sort that out on site with the contractor.
Okay, all right.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Right, in that case then, are members happy with the conditions that we've now suggested? And the point on the temporary classrooms, permitted use outside of the hours seven thirty to sixteen thirty will be remain presuming that the classrooms are relocated as we have agreed. If members, oh, sorry, quick on councillor, oh, sorry, Ian first and then councillor.
Great, I forgot to mention on the conditions, there was talk of protecting the cherry tree. There is a condition six, which requires a landscaping and environmental ecological management plan to be submitted and approved. The, the committee can deal with this by indicating that it expects the protection of the cherry tree and its crown to be included in the submitted plan. I don't think it requires a new extra condition.
Okay, all right. Members happy with that? Kate, are you happy with that one? Is Kate around?
Sorry, yes, absolutely, yeah, I'm happy with that.
Sorry, thank you. Councillor Gifford?
Yes, I just wanted to be absolutely, absolutely can get it clear in my mind that if there are technical issues because of exceptional circumstances, and we've seen exceptional circumstances in the last few months, that you will be able to, won't need to come back to committee. It won't mean that work has to, to cease with all the effects that might have on children's education, but you'll be able to look at it, decide whether it goes back to committee or not.
Correct. Okay, members, we've gone through quite a significant amount of debate and discussion on this particular one. Some excellent presentations and thank you very much again, Sally and the others for that. We're now ready for a vote. We do have a proposer with the amended conditions and I have a seconder. Helen, can we go to the vote please?
Yes, just to let you know, we haven't been able to get councillor Redford back in to the meeting. Isabel's tried several times, so I'm assuming he's having some technical problems at the moment. But we have tried.
Okay, thank you.
And so Chair, we'll start with you.
Four.
Councillor Cook?
Four.
Councillor Gifford?
Councillor Gifford?
You're muted councillor Gifford.
I thought, I thought I had unmuted, four.
Thank you. Councillor Phillips?
Four.
Councillor Riley?
Can you vote on this one?
Chair, I, yeah.
You can vote.
Oh, you share, I, I stated an interest in this.
Correct, you can't, you can't vote.
Sorry, that's my, sorry. Councillor Rickards?
Four.
Councillor Rolfe?
Four.
Councillor Simpson-Vince?
Four.
Councillor Warwick?
Four.
Councillor Williams? Councillor Williams, you're still muted at the moment. Still muted. Ian, can you stop sharing your screen and we'll see if he's still visible?
Can you hear me now?
There we are.
I've supported the application.
Thank you, councillor Williams. That's unanimous.
Thank you very much, indeed. Members, I therefore say that we, this application has been granted. That is NWV slash two zero CC zero zero two. Thank you for your forbearance, everybody. I'm going to now suggest a short break, a comfort break for two minutes, and then we'll come back to our next application. Thank you very much indeed. You're mute in the meantime, thank you.
Chair, sorry, just before, sorry, before everyone leaves, those external guests that have come in for this application, they're quite entitled to stay for the next agenda item if they want to, but we might want to give them just a couple of minutes to, to leave if they don't want to stay.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, I'll leave. Thank you very much, everybody.
All right, then I'm going to move on to our next item, which is Kingsbury Quarry, Dust Hill, extension to quarry to provide brick making material. And Matthew is our presenting officer.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you can, thank you.
Okay, good afternoon. This application relates to Kingsbury Brickworks and Quarry. What I will do is I will try to share presentation with you. Are you now seeing presentation on screen? Hopefully.
Yes, yes.
Yes, hopefully. As I say, this application relates to Kingsbury Quarry and Brickworks. Kingsbury Quarry is located in the north of the county, adjacent to or immediately south of the county boundary with Staffordshire. Kingsbury Quarry and the Brickworks there is a long established operation. The quarry, it's, it's key mineral that it produces is clay used in the brick industry and it is an atriumal. And the material or that clay is particularly high quality clay and it's used at the Brickworks for the production of blue bricks and blue brick products. The, just to give you an idea of where we are, there is the application site. So north you have the bottom end of Tamworth and Dust Hill. You can see the M forty-two traversing south of the application site. And you have Kingsbury to the south. We go into, that's the application site in slightly more detail. You have the Brickworks in this location. Then to the south of that is the existing quarry, which is this area here, which forms part of the application site. And the extension area itself is, hold on. The extension area itself is into the site to the east of the existing Brickworks. Again, just to go on to aerial photographs, just to give you an idea of where we're talking about. So you've got the M forty-two here, the existing quarry centrally, the urban area of Dust Hill to the south of Tamworth there, Kingsbury to the south. If you're familiar with the area, that's junction ten of the M forty-two where the AE five crosses and Birch Cope's over here. Just to go in a bit closer with each of these photographs, we can come back to these if you've got any questions specifically to location. You have the northern end of the site. This is the existing quarry there, which is where clay is sourced from at the moment. And this site is currently being infilled, although it is mottled at the moment with imported waste material. And then the extension area is this site there. The, and that's just a plan of the application site. The application itself proposes the extension of the quarry into the agricultural land to the east of the site. The application site as a whole, including the existing quarry, extends to fifty-two hectares with the actual application or extension area extending to twenty-six hectares. The extension area would allow five point six million tonnes of atriumal to be sourced as a raw material plus one million tonnes of sandstone. Currently, within the existing quarry, the applicant advises us that they only have around two hundred thousand tonnes of clay suitable for making the blue brick products available, which is less than two years of raw material for the Brickworks. The extension area would supply enough material to feed into the Brickworks for thirty-three years and the overall development timescale would be thirty-five years, which would incorporate a two-year restoration period at the end. Restoration of the site would not involve importing any material. It would simply be achieved using onsite overburden. Restoration of the site would be largely backed to agricultural use, plus its pre-existing use. Plus, there would be some nature conservation elements which would enable biodiversity benefits to be secured. The current planning permission allows operations to continue until 2042 on site and the proposed extension would extend that by fifteen years to 2055. Currently, within the application site, there is a site of special scientific interest, which is designated due to its, it's a geological feature. And if I just highlight the general area of the existing, triple S I is this location adjacent to the Brickworks. That would need to be removed as part of this development as mineral extraction would proceed in that direction. The proposal is however, to provide a replacement geological exposure at the northern end of the extension site in the long term. The development would be undertaken in a phased process. And if I just show you this plan, the extraction area as a whole relates to what you are seeing in the various shades of brown. It all would take place to the western side of what is a line of pylons across the site in this location. So the extraction would start at the northern end of the extension site initially. And within that first period, the extraction would be opened up and work from the northern end of the site. And as I say, during this period, this would also involve creating a new geological exposure along this northern part of the site to replace that that would be lost. The initial phase would also involve creating overburdened manes and soil storage areas around the periphery of the site, which are these areas here, which would obviously be storage areas in the long term, but they also would provide screening of the site in the long term also. As things progressed into, that would be phase A. Phase B, you'll see that the extraction area would extend to a larger area and begin to work in a southerly direction. During this phase, some initial restoration works would enable to be achieved in this northern part of the site adjacent to the geological exposure. Then as phase C was developed, again, the working area would move in a southerly direction. But again, progressive restoration would be able to be achieved as this northern part of the site would be returned to agricultural use. And then we go into the final phase of the development, which takes you up to the thirty-five year period, which brings you restoration of the site. So you would end up with, I suppose, two distinct areas of agricultural use. These, that area there and this area here, which would be relatively shallow slopes on the site, thus they can be used for agriculture. Across the middle, you'd get a more steeply sloping escarpment, which would be returned to a woodland type path of use. And then in this northern corner here, you'd get an area of wetland and pond areas, which would be beneficial for biodiversity in the long term. The mineral extraction would remain at the existing levels within the site, which is around two hundred thousand tonnes per annum, one hundred thousand tonnes of which goes into the adjoining Brickworks. A further hundred thousand tonnes or up to a hundred thousand tonnes is exported from the site, which the applicant uses in some of their other Brickworks in the West Midlands to blend with clays. which the applicant uses in some of their other Brickworks in the West Midlands to blend with clays extracted at those Brickworks. Extraction at Kingsbury Quarry is undertaken on a campaign basis. So you get basically two periods of extraction a year over around eight week period. And the clay that is extracted is then put in an area, sort of where I'm showing here, which is at the southern end of the Brickworks, from where it is fed into the Brickworks over the six month period that that stockpile lasts for. The access into the site, if I go back just to show you, access into the site is from the A fifty-one and along Rush Lane and then along what is a private access over a railway line. And that's the access into both the Brickworks and the quarry. The level of production would remain the same, thus vehicle movements associated with the Brickworks and the export of clay would remain as existing. The statutory consultees, you'll note from the report, there's some quite extensive feedback which are detailed there. But I'll go through some of the detail of that and a bit more as we go through this presentation. In terms of notification of the application, we notified, well, an advert went in the Tamworth Herald, which circulates in that area. Site notices were put within thirteen locations around the site in various residential areas. And the nearest residential properties were notified directly. This includes this area to the east of the site, which is the hamlet of Wakeley. In terms of representations received, we've received three from residents and neighbours, two of whom are from residents of Wakeley. I think their concerns really are the fact that the application site and quarry would be extending closer to the residential area and of Wakeley. And the concerns are visual impact and amenity concerns. They also have some concerns about HGV movements through the village of Wakeley. One further representation was received from a resident of Dust Hill, who would be located sort of in, on the A fifty-one north of the site. Their concerns related to vehicle movements from the site and vehicle numbers and the movements proposed. The, in terms of policy background for this application, the site is not allocated in the adopted minerals plan. That's not unusual because the existing minerals plan only allocates sites for sand and gravel extraction. Thus, because it's not an allocated site, it is being dealt with as a departure from the development plan. However, it is considered that there are supporting factors to suggest that the application can be supported at this time. The national, the NPPF and Emerging Replacement Warwickshire Minerals Plan does support the creation of landbanks for brick clay. The NPPF suggests that in terms of brick clay, a landbank of raw material should be provided for Brickworks of in excess of twenty-five years. Currently, as I've said, the mineral within the existing site is quite limited and they only have two years reserves, so they're some way below national policy guidance. The thirty-three years that they are, the application site would release clearly would support a landbank and clearly there was demonstrated that there was a need for further clay to be released in this area for the Brickworks. The site is located within the West Midlands Greenbelt. Mineral extraction need not be inappropriate within Greenbelt as long as it maintains openness and preserves that openness of the Greenbelt. The development is a temporary land use, albeit not short term. In the long term, the land would be restored, back to agricultural use predominantly. And thus therefore, it would not impact on openness in the long term. And therefore, it is considered that it would be an acceptable form of development within the Greenbelt. In terms of other policy issues, the Brickworks contributes to the local economy. And again, general policy support from the NPPF in that respect. And the application site immediately adjoins the Brickworks, thus the material can be fed directly into the Brickworks, which has sustainability positives, which is supported by policy. Just going through some of the detail of the applicant, of the consultee responses, you will note that North Warwickshire Borough Council raise no objection in principle. They have however asked that the hours of operation be reviewed as part of this proposal, if possible. The existing planning consent for the current quarry has quite long operating hours in terms of mineral extraction. That's six AM until eight PM, Monday to Sunday. In discussion with the applicant, the applicant is prepared and willing to reduce the hours of operation in the proposed extension area. And the hours that are suggested are six thirty AM until six thirty AM, Monday to Friday, seven thirty AM until one thirty on Saturdays, with no working on Sundays, bank holidays or public holidays. This is obviously quite a reduction in the hours that are possible to be worked within the existing quarry and this would seem to be a benefit. And it does reflect standard operating hours within such mineral extraction sites. Flood risk management, our flood risk management team are happy with the proposed surface water management scheme for the site, subject to conditions to ensure compliance with the drainage scheme and appropriately worded conditions are suggested. In terms of ecology, the overall restoration scheme seeks to secure biodiversity net gain. And that has been demonstrated through a the application process. The county ecologist is, as you might imagine, keen to ensure that the biodiversity gains predicted are secured. And a condition is proposed within the proposed set of conditions to secure that. Again, the county ecologist is keen to ensure protection of existing ecology of the site. And again, conditions are proposed that would ensure that the existing ecology of the site is protected in the long term. In terms of archaeology, the site has undergone some initial pre-application archaeological investigation. This has demonstrated that there are archaeological features across the site or indeed across parts of the site. The county ecologist has no objection in principle, subject to further works being undertaken during the extraction stages in order to undertake further archaeological works. So that's monitoring of works and recording of finds. And again, a condition is proposed. In terms of the geological triple S I, Natural England are happy with the proposal to replace the existing geological exposure that would be lost with a new feature along this northern boundary here. And subject to clearly that being secured and managed. And again, a condition is proposed within the set of conditions to secure that feature within a reasonable timescale within the initial phase of development. And this is to secure its management in the long term. The site, as I say, is a, currently is one large expanse of agricultural land, which I'll show you photographs of in a minute. Natural England again are keen to secure protection of the soils because currently it is best and most versatile in terms of agricultural land. The applicant has put forward a plan to secure the restoration so that those soils are protected in the long term. Natural England obviously wish to ensure that this takes place. And again, conditions are proposed to ensure protection of those soils. Network rail, as I've said, there is a bridge to get into the site, which takes you over the railway in this location. Network rail have no objection in principle, although they do request that the surface of the bridge into that site is resurfaced and maintained. Again, this is something that the applicant is prepared and willing to contribute towards and fund. And a condition is proposed to ensure that a scheme is submitted and that those works are completed. The, as I say, the local residents have raised some concern about the development of the site coming closer to the village of Wakeley particularly. And some concerns have been raised about noise and dust. However, it is considered that noise and dust particularly and the visual impact can be controlled. The visual impact through the design of the workings and the use of screen buns. And conditions are proposed to ensure that dust or potential dust is managed and that a dust management scheme is submitted. And in terms of noise, conditions are proposed to control noise emissions in terms of maximum noise levels permitted. And as I say, the hours of operation, the applicant is prepared to commit to reduced hours of operation. And again, this would be conditioned. And in terms of the condition of the highway, and conditions are proposed that would ensure that vehicles leaving the site are adequately clean in terms of maintaining the condition of the highway. It is a new, obviously, extension area closer to the residential areas of Wakeley. There has in the past been a liaison group met at this site, although I don't believe it's met for some years. Again, the applicant has committed to facilitate, attend a liaison group. And it would seem certainly during the initial site setup and operation of the extension area, that some resident forum and liaison with the nearest residents in Wakeley here would be a good idea so that they are aware of the developments and know how things are progressing. And as I say, the applicant has committed to participating in a liaison meeting. And again, a condition is proposed in order to facilitate the setting up of that and operation of that throughout the life of the extension area. I think if I take you through just a few photographs. Sorry, I was just going to show you this one. This is a cross section of how the site would be worked, so, or how things would change over time. The upper profile here you are seeing on the plans is the existing land profile of the site. The lower line you get through here is the depth that the site would be worked to and how the working would get to in terms of the maximum depth of working. And then the middle line through here shows what the site would look like and its restored level. So there would be a reduction in the land levels overall because clearly the mineral would have been removed. But you would then get a, I suppose, reasonably natural landform in the long term post restoration. In terms of photographs of the site, this is a photograph taken from the application site, looking back down onto the Brickworks itself. You'll see that the site is slopes down towards the application site here. The, you don't see it as such, but this boundary here where this hedge line is, is the edge of the triple S I geological feature. And if you actually go to the site currently, it is quite vegetation has taken over. So actually, it's difficult to see the geological exposure. So the creation of a new one and management of it in the long term would actually be beneficial. This is the southern end of the Brickworks itself. So as I said, they extract the mineral on a campaign basis. They then stockpile it in this location at the southern end of the Brickworks. And then over the six month period, that clay is fed into the Brickworks for the production of bricks. You will see from this photograph just off Rush Lane coming into the application site, there are areas of other commercial uses and industrial uses. And then further to the north are the residential areas to the south of Dust Hill. This area of land between the two is actually the subject of a planning application at the moment to North Warwickshire Borough Council, which proposes a mixed use of residential and commercial uses. Which I think it's yet to be determined, but I believe the residential would be at the northern end. The southern end would be the commercial uses. This is the existing quarry site to the south of the Brickworks, as I say. Worked on a campaign basis for much of the year. It sits there quietly without activities taking place and it's just the mineral void like that. And then this is looking back the other direction. So you have, the Brickworks is just behind this mound. This is an area, sorry. This is an area that has undergone some degree of infilling thus far with imported wastes. Then we look to the east across the site. This is behind me is the Brickworks. This is looking across the application site. The tree line you see there and hedge line is the eastern boundary of the site. And then on the skyline, you get the properties that are the hamlet of Wakeley. If the next photograph, this is a zoomed photograph from exactly the same position. And then you'll see these properties. But as I say, that photograph is very much in zoom version of what you see. Then takes you to the south eastern corner of the site, looking back across the site. As I say, all these photographs hopefully give you the impression that it is currently, the application site is one very large agricultural field. In the dip beyond the horizon there is where the Brickworks is. Again, this is from the eastern boundary of the site, looking back towards across the application site here. The Brickworks is in the bottom over the horizon there. A view looking sort of south west across the site. And you have, this is the application site. The mineral extraction would take place to the southern side or western side of the power cable lines. The eastern side would be where soils are stored. On, in the distance there is the existing quarry. Again, this is a zoomed view across the site and, and as I say, that's the existing quarry in the distance. Again, a further view from the site, from the north eastern side across the site. So the extraction area would be this side of the power cables. Soil storage would be on the other side of the power cables. Again, a further view across the site. As I say, the Brickworks is just over the horizon there. And then you're seeing in the distance there the southern peripheries of Dust Hill and the residential areas. This is just further along the eastern boundary, showing a similar view. So you've got your residential areas there and the commercial areas of Rush Lane there. And this is, I think, the photograph of the site or on the site, so you've got the Brickworks in the distance there. And this is the northern boundary with Rush Lane just over this hedge line here. This photograph is taken from the village of Wakeley. So the properties you saw in those earlier photographs, I'm stood in front of one. The hedge line with trees you see across here is the boundary of the application site. The pylon there is centrally within the site with the extraction area to the right of it and beyond soil storage to the left of it. This, this is just to give you an idea of what the village of Wakeley is like. As the residents of, one of the concerns they've raised is about HGV movements through the village. You'll get from these photographs that it is a small hamlet and the road network is not suited to HGV movements. So you can understand what their concerns are. This is a view into the application site across the railway bridge that I've made mention of. So what you are seeing here is over the railway bridge. This is the southern end of the Brickworks site. That vegetation you're seeing in the distance is the southern end of the triple S I. So you'll, you'll get the impression, as I've said, that vegetation has taken over to some degree. So you'll, you'll get the impression, as I've said, that vegetation has taken over to some degree. And this is another view of the bridge that Network Rail wished to see resurfaced and maintained. This is looking out from the brickworks, um. And then this is Rush Lane itself and the entrance into the brickworks here. This is a triangle of land, um, that is currently being developed for a commercial use. I think it's a pallet business will be relocated on that site. The land, the northern side of Rush Lane is a, um, sort of large-scale scaffolding business. And then you'll see the site I'm talking about being developed and this is the entrance into the brickworks. That, sorry, this final shot, just in case you wanted any detail on the triple S I, what you're seeing there, that, in the middle of that view, the light green is actually the area of the site that is designated as the triple S I, um, by Natural England. So I've taken you through all the photographs, um, and the main points. I think the conclusions are that the proposed development would provide a source of brickmaking material, which is Etrurium R, which is a high-quality clay, um, for the production of the blue engineering bricks. And this is supported by policy. In terms of the green belt, mineral extraction is an appropriate form of development as it will not adversely impact upon the green belt in the long term. It's considered that the development could be undertaking without, uh, unacceptable impacts subject to conditions that are proposed within the reports. Restoration of the site in the long term would secure traditional pattern of fields and woodland, um, which would be integrated within the landscape. And in the long term, this would be beneficial. It would also secure biodiversity, uh, benefits in the long term. Although the site is not adopted, uh, within the, um, minerals plan and thus it's been dealt with a departure from the development plan, it's, uh, is considered that it would not have adverse impacts that outweigh the benefits, which means that development is one that could be supported and therefore the report recommends approval of the application. Thank you. I'm happy to take any questions.
Hello?
Hello?
Captain. Yes.
Yes.
I'm getting echo somewhere guys. Is it me?
No, I'm getting it too.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm getting it too.
Okay, try that again now, Bill.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Um, my, my concern is we've got a site of special scientific interest, uh, which is described as a, um, geological exposure. I think of as an oak crop. Um, it's, we had no picture of it at all. Um, we were told that, uh, there's no problem with, you know, just getting removed, but at the same time, we're told that it's, uh, um, we're told that National England are happy with the proposed creation of a new geological exposure. It's a strange thing is that they say they can't actually see the existing one because it's covered in, in, uh, um, vegetation. So how do they know how valuable the existing one is? Why was it a site of special scientific interest in the first place? I can see why because oak crops are of considerable interest to geologists. Um, and they aren't something that, uh, you know, yes, you get them cliffs around the, around the coast, but you don't get them everywhere. And I'm trying to work out how you can artificially produce a, it's, it's not as though you're sort of, um, replace, it's, it's not as though you're getting rid of a bit of woodland and planting, uh, a la- even larger woodland. What you're doing is you're getting rid of quite possibly millions or possibly even hundreds of millions of years of geological history. Um, and saying, oh, well, we'll just dig, dig somewhere else. And you don't actually know what you're losing. Somebody at some point thought it was important.
Right, over to you, Matthew. Uh, okay, the, um, a geological exposure that has been designated as a triple S I. It has been created, um, by the fact that there has been mineral, mineral extraction take place because in doing so, you create a face. And the face, the face that was created there is a, um, example of the, uh, type of mineral that is worked there. So you, you, you have, if you could see it, a geological exposure showing the sandstone and the Etrurium R and how are they sort of running to one another. The, as I understand it, the way and the reason that triple S Is are designated for geological features is it's in, it's almost like a reference library. So it provides a feature that if people wish to go and view such things and learn from them, they can do so. Um, that said, as I say, this one hasn't been maintained particularly well and vegetation has taken over. So it's not very easy to see. The actual working of the mineral and creates literally with each, um, cut you make and, uh, and abstraction that's taken place creates a new face. And it is able, it's, it's possible to create a similar face elsewhere within the site. And Natural England are happy with what is being proposed in terms of creating a new face and that it will be beneficial in the long term if it is managed. And as I say, we are proposing a condition to secure, um, achievement of that face and to secure management of it in the long term so it can be maintained. Uh, thank you. Council Riley.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I've got nine questions. Um, it feels as though none of them are particularly difficult to answer, but, um, I'll work through them perhaps and let Mark, Matthew, sorry, answer each one.
Yeah.
Right with that chair. Uh, before I, I raise them, I think I, I just put on record that I'm finding it incredibly difficult to follow this presentation from home. Um, I'm looking at detailed maps. I cannot see legend on the maps. I can't understand what's being said. And I am completely and utterly dependent on Matthew's interpretation of, of what is there. So first point to make is this is a major application. And I don't think that online is the best place to be determining this. Now, I don't have a solution to you for how to get around this, but I will just put that on the table to start with. Um, I think the first of the questions, Matthew, is about the mineral strategy. So the county council has got a draft mineral strategy which is waiting to go to the inspector, which runs up to twenty thirty-three. So fifteen year, well, thirteen years as it is now. Um, now we are looking at an application here for thirty-five years. So the first question, and I know you touched on it when you were speaking, is this isn't an allocated site in the county's mineral strategy. Why are we considering thirty-five years when we're not considering up to twenty thirty-three, which is where the county's mineral strategy for every other mineral extraction in the county is currently planned to?
Uh, okay, to answer that one, the, the extraction phase is actually thirty-three years. The overall development is thirty-five years because the final two years are a restoration phase to get the site restored. Um, in terms of the, uh, minerals plan or the emerging minerals plan, it doesn't specifically allocate sites for, um, clay extraction. But it is, uh, proposing a policy relating to, uh, bricklay. Um, and the, um, it does reflect national policy guidance that, um, a land bank or a, uh, raw material reserve is secured for brickworks of at least twenty-five years. That whilst that's an emerging document, uh, it has gone through a consultation stage and there have not been any, um, objections to that proposal in terms of a policy. So it is considered that that, uh, holds some weight going forward.
Excellent. Next question.
That's noted, Chair. It just seems that this isn't an appropriate environment in which to consider this application. Um, going down to more specific points, condition fourteen, Matthew, about extraction of a hundred and, a hundred thousand pounds a year. Obviously, you, we cannot plan for HS two phase two B, but am I right in thinking that what will be outlined in the bill if phase two B goes through encroaches on this extraction site or not?
The, um, HS two phase B would run along the southern or, uh, southeastern boundary of the overall site. In essence, it would touch upon the bottom end of the existing, uh, extension area. It would not impact that basically the site has been designed so that the, um, if HS two is to take place, it will not impact on the extraction area.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's fine then. Um.
Excuse me, I'm really sorry to interrupt. Matthew, is there any way you can make your screen full screen? Just to see if that helps with the, um, the maps on your presentation?
Uh, stay with me. I'll try and get them up again. Are you getting that now?
Yeah, but it's only small.
Ah, right.
You're not on force. Go to slideshow.
Yeah. From beginning. Is that on full screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Right. So did you not have it on full screen during?
Yeah, but that's not, not helping, I think, because it's still, unless you can zoom into some of the applications. I think, Council Riley, uh, you've got a good point. Let's, let's see if we can't examine a way around that one. I think it's, it's a valid point.
Can I just double check? Did the members not get paper copies for this meeting?
Yeah, but, um, it won't have all those details.
I won't have the presentation. Oh, sorry.
So if you can see this plan in front of you now, I can answer the question relating to HS two. The grey area you're seeing down here, basically the line through there is the, um, area where the HS two would take place. So it's, it's outside of the extraction area.
Yeah, thanks, Matthew. I was just wondering if the points are material now, to be quite honest.
Okay.
Um, i- in terms of condition thirty-two, which is about hours of the site.
Yeah.
Um, can you be clear for me? Will there be any activity on that site outside the, the published hours, which I think you're flicking through hundreds of pages here, are six-thirty in, in the morning and six-thirty at night? So what I minded here is with HS two, they've set construction hours within their sites, but actually they can do all sorts of preparation twenty-four seven. So are we seeing that in terms of amenity impact for noise and, and dust and all the rest of it for neighbours? This site will only work on those hours outlined in condition thirty-two, is it? Thirty-three?
Thirty-three. Um, yeah, the, the, the hours of operation that are proposed within, uh, that condition are what the operator would have to operate within.
So there'd be no activity outside six-thirty at night and six-thirty in the morning?
That's correct. So, yeah, the, 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 the hours of operation would be specific to those operations. So there's one element would relate to mineral extraction and one would relate to, uh, soil stripping and overburden removal. And they would have to operate within those specified hours.
Okay, thank you. Um, thirty, condition thirty-five is about restoration.
Yep.
Will restoration take place incrementally as certain parts of the site? Because it is a huge site, isn't it, declared? Or will restoration be done all at the end, as I, as I think you've alluded to, for the last two years?
There would be some degree of, um, uh, there would be a degree, elements of, um, phased restoration, which I've shown from the restoration, uh, the working plans. Now, I am not seeing that again for some reason. What screen are you seeing at the moment, please?
Uh, I'm looking at everybody at the moment on the panel. I'm looking at your home screen. So you're broadcasting what we all see anyway.
Yeah. Are you seeing now the, uh, presentation?
No.
Because I think I'm having some problems. You are?
No, we're not.
Okay. If I'm, sorry, I can't get that up at the moment for some reason, but in terms of the phasing, there would be a element of phased restoration. So it would start from the northern end of the site and would work in southerly direction with each phase. Now, um, it, obviously, the major part of the restoration would happen towards the latter end of the development due to the nature of the site and the size of the site, but there would, as I say, be an element of phased restoration going through the development.
Okay. Now, and I think that's important, isn't it? Because what I think your photographs demonstrated is we're actually talking about hillside here. So we're not talking about a, a flat area that won't be visible for, for a, a large distance, but looking at the photographs you put up, the site will be visible to a whole number of people outside the community of Wheatley and Dust Hill.
It is a gently sloping site. I think, um, it's fair to describe it as, but yes, there would be elements of it that can be visible from outside of the site.
Okay, thank you. Um, the, the liaison SSP, that's not conditioned anywhere, the liaison group. Um, it, it strikes me as though that, that would be a good condition to to create that the, that the company, as opposed to volunteering to do it, have to do it.
Yeah. Condition ten that's proposed would, um, enable, well, it relates to the liaison group that is proposed. And, and it, it requires that the, uh, formation of it and how it operates and who is involved frequency is, uh, agreed before it commences.
Okay, okay, good. Mark that one. Um, one oh six. Uh, is what, is this application appropriate for one oh six?
The, there is no, uh, section one oh six related to this site or proposed because there are no specific requirements that would need to be covered within a section one oh six agreement.
But in terms of community benefit, in terms of developer doing some good or, or applicant doing some good for the local communities, has anybody offered those conversations?
Uh, clearly, any, um, thing that is secured via a, um, legal agreement or planning obligation needs to be, uh, appropriate linked to development and necessary to make the development, um, uh, achievable or, or, or appropriate in that location. And in this case, uh, there isn't any specific requirement for anything that would need to be covered within a, uh, legal agreement. Say, for example, any highway improvements that, that may be required. In this case, the highway situation remains the same. There isn't any greater impact on the highway network.
But there are ecological impacts and there is the relocation of a triple S I. And those would seem to be in an area that's included within the Payne Valley Wetland Partnership area. They would seem to be one oh sixes that would be pertinent to this application.
Uh, the, the elements you referred to of ec- ecology, um, and the triple S I. Yes, they are things that need to be addressed and secured, but there are conditions proposed within the, um, proposed list of conditions to secure those.
Okay, I think I, I think I understand what you're saying. I'm not too sure. Um, a- and then finally, I think you, you said in the presentation that there would be no imported waste material as part of the restoration. But then when you were putting the photographs up, you talked about the importation of waste material.
Okay, the, the existing quarry and, uh, working area that has been where they've been extracting mineral from for a number of years, that operates under a planning consent that, um, was approved some years ago, the nineteen nineties, I believe. And that planning consent allows And that planning consent allows the existing quarry to be restored with the importation of waste materials. That has taken place in the past. Currently, it's not happening because they are not importing waste. Um, but it, it will at some point recommence. So that area has been infilled with imported waste. The proposed extension area, this application, its restoration would be secured using onsite overburden materials only. There would be no requirement to import materials to restore the extension area.
Okay, well, thanks very much indeed, Chair. That answers all my, all the issues I had. I just go back to my opening comments that it seems really strange to be sitting here determining what is a massive application, which will run for thirty five years. When you look at the mineral extraction sites, which are currently in their fifth year uh preparation for the county's mineral strategy, which have had whole hosts of public consultation done um to bottom out a lot of the issues. And I don't know, it just feels really weird. I've got a case, a case papers that arrived last week. I can't see the presentations because they're too small. Uh, and I think it's, it's a challenge to, to determine with integrity.
I think it's a good point about the detailed drawings. I think if we are going to have some detailed drawings and we're still doing virtual meetings, then perhaps so should be sent out with the reports. I think it's, it's a well worthwhile uh comment, Councillor. Right, um, are there any other technical questions of Matthew? Okay, well, in that case then, um, oh, sorry, no, that's again, it's gone again. I haven't got anyone here. Right, okay. Um, in that case then, I would like to open it up for Councillor Rickards. It was you.
Thanks, Chair. I have been waiting some time. Um, I, I, I was going to ask a question about the 106 as well, which Councillor Ri- Ri- uh Riley has raised. But I, I just want to clarify further. In the planning history, there's mention of a nineteen ninety eight consolidated consent, which does have several 106 elements. And yet, i- in the notes, it's not explained as why a 106 doesn't still apply. So if Matthew could say a little bit more about why that is, I'd appreciate it.
Yep. The um, the planning consent you referred to, which is uh, it was submitted in nineteen ninety seven. But yes, I think it was approved in nineteen ninety eight. That uh is the one that relates to the consolidation of mineral working within the existing site and includes uh infilling of the site with imported wastes. That did have a section 106 agreement linked to that development because there were a number of requirements that needed to be covered by a legal agreement. And one of the key aspects of that, which I'm just trying to find the detail of here, um, related to the uh provision of some highway improvements offsite in Kingsbury, which included traffic calming. Um, and it was complicated, but that happened. And that element of the uh development or 106 agreement was subsequently removed. Um, and there were other elements of it relating to the um sort of management of the site in the long term of that existing site. Now, that planning permission will, relates to that area uh in the long term. Um, a- and it also had elements relating to the numbers of vehicles that were permitted for the importation of waste. So it was very much related to that development. As I say, the proposal before us now is uh, it is for mineral extraction. It doesn't include importation of waste. And there aren't any requirements that would need to be covered within a legal agreement. The, all of the elements that are required, um suitably worded conditions are suggested in order to secure those issues and, and make sure that they're addressed and covered.
Hmm. Okay.
Sorry to interrupt, um Chair. Sally has um Matthew's presentation. She's got a hold of it. So if Matthew's having problems, Sally should be able to share it on screen now. I understand like there's, there are issues with looking at the maps. But if members feel the photographs would be helpful, then I think Sally should be able to share it on her screen.
I can do that, if you want it, if you, I can share it on mine and, and you can direct me to whatever you want to show.
If there's a need to look at the photographs again, that's.
Yeah, just give a shout and I can share whatever. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
If members feel that they need to see the, the photos. I think the point being that unless we can zoom into some of these um more technically detailed drawings, uh, I don't, well, I think photographs are photographs. I think you can see those. But it's a point that I think we need to look at. We'll have a look at the technical part of that one.
Yes.
Right, okay, the members. Um, I have no other hands up, any other technical questions, no speakers. So I'm going to uh go to debate. Are there any persons wishing to speak on this one? Councillor Riley.
Thanks, Chair. It is, I suppose it's just to go back to this issue that I've raised about whether we feel we are able to determine this application today. Um, you know, it's dead easy to sit here in, in the confines of our homes and look at a few pages and watch the screen and say, yeah, but it's, I, I am struck by the enormity of this application. This is thirty five years of working. Um, for a site that I've never seen, I know where it is, but you certainly won't uh, as members not coming from, from North Warwickshire. Uh, and yet it, it doesn't feel appropriate that on the basis of a set of case papers that arrived on Thursday that clearly aren't complete, we should be moving forward with a technical application like this today.
Okay, well, I, I, I won't agree with that. I do feel that there is sufficient. And I think the very thorough explanation from Matthew would explain, in my personal opinion anyway, uh sufficiently well. The other thing is that it's not as if it's a new application. This is actually an extension to an existing works. And therefore, considering the fact that none of the local members, none of the local councillors, none of the uh local organisations have actually objected to it, my personal view is that this is something that, I'm not saying it's necessarily welcomed by the community, but accepted by the community. So I'm fairly, fairly more sanguine about this particular point. The point that you've raised is a valid one about the technical detail and perhaps it's something we do need to look at. Um, having said that, I felt that the topographical drawings that Matthew showed gave me quite enough information about the method of extraction and also the, the refilling of the, the land afterwards. And this is not the first time we've had a quarry. We've had a number of quarries and we've, we've seen them all over. And we do have other quarries. I've never seen this particular one, I agree. But I have seen other ones in my patch as well, uh which again, you wouldn't have necessarily seen. Uh, and we have made decisions on those as well in the past. So my personal view is that I've had probably enough information and feedback, certainly from, or lack of, I should say, from the locals, in, in this particular case, and from the councillors, to be able to fairly confidently make a decision. It is a long time and I get that. But the way that this particular site's being extracted, et cetera, then I feel that it's just another ongoing process that doesn't seem, on the face of it, to have caused a huge disruption to the communities. Um, no, I'm, I'm fairly happy with, with that and uh I think I'm happy to make a decision on this one. Councillor Warrick.
Yes, Chair. Um, whilst having a little bit of sympathy with, with Councillor Riley's comments, I do think we've got to be very careful that we don't pick and choose what we can and can't determine by this method. We either can determine the applications or we can't determine. Um, and yeah, perhaps it would be useful to have a link that members could go to to download the drawings directly to the Surface Pro in more detail. I think that might be helpful moving forward. So we could just simply download the draw and zoom them in from, on our, on our own devices and be able to see what's uh, what's there. So I take on board what's being said, but we're either going to use this process or we're not. And we've chosen to do so. Yeah, perhaps a more detailed set of drawings emailed to us that we can zoom in on might be helpful. But uh I just see this as a continuation of what's being done. And we need these minerals. We need these bricks. And it is the only, uh, the only quarry in, in Warwickshire, I believe, that produces this particular type of clay that produces these blue bricks. So.
That's correct.
I think we, I think we have to sort of consider that as a requirement if we're going to be building houses in Warwickshire, which we are. So I, I, I am minded to go with the officer's recommendations on this, Chair.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Cook.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Um, I'd like to talk about the, about Dave Riley's point. I think the, the thing is, I'm not sure, other than doing something that Adrian Warwick has suggested, now having a link to an outside thing is going to actually improve the size of the pictures. Because I think the software, uh, the team's software limits the size of the picture that's going to be put in. You can't zoom in on that. So, so I think that's a technical issue. Um, but I, what I do think is that, uh, I do think we've had, uh, it was an excellent presentation by Matthew. Um, the fact that we couldn't necessarily see, and what I found myself doing was actually getting uh much closer to the screen like this to see if I could do. Um, so I did find myself doing that. Um, now, let's just think about it. This is a planning application and, Chairman, you made a very valid point. We've had these before. This is a site where there's existing work going on. Um, and I'm, I'm struck by the fact, uh, and I've looked at very carefully at this. In fact, I got up very early this morning to read this report. So I'm, it's very familiar to me. I can actually remember it as well. Um, but I did, I, I, I was impressed by the sort of consultations that have taken place and the individual sections that have been very carefully written. Now, the, the only issue I had, and I'm, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to come to a bottom line in a second, but um, just, this is just a question before I make a proposal, is that um when it's because of the development plan, um, I'm reminded, I'm minded as my colleagues who are members of district or borough council planning committees, when you depart from a particular plan that's been agreed, very often you have to advertise that for, in the papers, a formal departure from a plan. Um, question then, is that necessary um when you're pretending to depart from uh a minerals plan? Or indeed, is the actual planning application in itself, which quite clearly indicates that, um, the necessary notice required by law? And then I'm going to come on to a proposal, Chairman.
I think, uh, what I can say is this application has been uh advertised and as part of that advertisement, it was advertised as a departure.
Right, thank you.
So, so that has been addressed.
That's fine. Okay, thank you. Well, Chairman, I've, I've looked at this and, and um, Adrian just made the point that we need to get these bricks out at some point. We need to be able to create bricks. It's a blue brick which is required. Um, and you know, at the end of the day, it is a minerals, minerals that are required on a site that we, is, is going to be producing on that site for some time. I accept that this is an increase in the amount of, uh, of, of work that's being done. But I do think, if we were looking at it as normally, have we got any justification of not allowing it in planning terms? I'm not sure that we have. So, Chairman, in a minute, I know you're not into that at the moment, but I will be, when we move into the decision phase, I will be moving that we, that we grant the application and the conditions are set out in accordance with the officer's report.
Thank you. Councillor Rickards.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, I, I'd like to formally um move the recommendation. Um, can't see any reason why we can't determine it um here and now. Um, and um, you know, with the conditions prescribed, I can't see any reason why we can't approve it. So I formally now move the recommendation.
I think that trumps uh Councillor Cook. But he will have an op- he has an opportunity to second this as soon as I. Right, members, I am, I'm, I have no more hands up for debate. I'm now going to go to the vote. And the vote is to grant planning permission for application NWB slash nineteen CM zero two zero Kingsbury Quarry. Uh, I have a proposer.
And you have a second, Chair.
I have a second. Thank you very much indeed, Councillor Cook. Helen, can we do the roll call again, please?
Okay, can we start with you, Chair?
For?
Councillor Cook?
For.
Councillor Gifford?
For.
Councillor Phillips?
For.
Councillor Riley?
Abstaining, Chair.
Councillor Rickards?
For.
Councillor Rolf?
For.
Councillor Simpson-Vince?
For.
Councillor Warwick?
For.
Councillor Williams? Sorry, Councillor Williams, you were muted and I missed that.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I support the application.
Thank you, Councillor Williams. That's nine votes for with one abstain.
Thank you. The decision of this committee to grant planning permission for NWB slash nineteen CM zero two zero. Thank you very much indeed, members. Right, that's been a long meeting today. I don't have any other business. Correct me if I'm wrong, Helen.
Not that I'm aware of.
In which case, I would like to thank you all for your perseverance and see you hopefully physically in the not too distant future. Take care of yourselves and see you soon. Bye bye.
Bye.